Is that on? Can you hear me?
It's on.
At a recent meeting, I commented that the rate increase that was advertised as 9.8% for water really wasn't. And tonight, I brought you a sheet that shows you the differences from 9.8%. When I talked to you last, I was incorrect when I said it was, many of them were 20%. Actually, it ranges from 6% to almost 11%. And I think that one of the comments I made before was that it wasn't accurate. I think it's probably less inaccurate than I implied before. And some of the increases are down in the 6% range. So some of the citizens are going to have much less impact than others. I put a little graph on what the proposed and the current rates are. So I appreciate your attention. And the main thing I was concerned about is that the information that's presented to the public be accurate. And I think exactly 9.8% really isn't the case. And I didn't calculate the wastewater. There's probably something similar there since they're related to the water. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Item number four is conduct a study session to review the recommended 2012, 13 general funds, special revenue funds, and enterprise funds budget.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for getting together again, a second time, so that we can complete the initial review of the general fund and enterprise fund operating budgets. It's our intent to be as efficient as we can tonight with your time because we were actually able to make pretty good progress through the whole of the general fund budget at the study session last Wednesday night. And tonight, we will be focusing on the enterprise fund budgets. We have one item that will come forward subsequently along with the capital improvement program budget, having to do with vehicle replacements that we'd like to discuss with you tonight. And we wanted to start with a quick review of some of the topics from the last study session that either may need a little bit more clarification, at least in staff's perspective, we thought maybe we went a little bit too fast, and a couple of items that we'd like to give you a heads up as coming attractions. The last thing that we'd like to do before we turn to the departments or to the enterprise presentation is to answer a couple of the questions that were not answered at the meeting last week and then, and that we have received since that time, is actually very few questions. And what we will be doing, as we've done in previous years, is to compile all of the questions that we receive, whether we answered them or not previously, along with the answers, and provide that to you along with your packet on June 26th in coordination with our proposed or our recommendation to you to adopt the budget. So just very quickly on a couple of items, touching back to last week's study session, I wanted to again encourage the city council, as part of your budget action, to direct staff to come back to you in a timely manner, in a, within the next, I would say, within, certainly within 30 to 60 days after the budget adoption, with a focused review of how to address some of the city organization's unmet financial needs. We talked a little bit last week about the fact that the city has a variety of topic areas where it's done well. We've established a general fund reserve that is, at this point, at the level that one would consider to be at least minimally, if not moderately, appropriate, given the size of our general fund operating budget. We have an equipment reserve. We'll talk a little bit about that tonight. But where the city is really completely uncovered, if you will, in terms of a financial plan or reserve, is in the area of disaster response. We talked a little bit about this last week. And the topic that I would say may be even a little bit more immediately pressing, and that is the responsibility that we have to maintain and provide funding for rehabilitation and/or replacement of the facilities that are necessary to the delivery of services to our citizens. So again, we will be coming back and would appreciate your interest and action subsequent to a more detailed review opportunity to really address and hone down those financial issues. Because really, the budget for the things that we are currently paying attention to is really only part of the city's overall financial story. I'm going to ask Kim, our finance director, to give you a very quick presentation on pension, an opportunity to use pension obligation bonds to save the city some cost. We just note right off the top that we did not include savings related to this technique in the budget, but are recommending to you for actually an initial action on June 26th in order to get this ball rolling, the opportunity to consider a financing mechanism that would allow us at least some annual savings now into the future for a retirement obligation that the city is currently faced with.
So in the continuing effort of identifying areas in which we can reduce our costs, one area that has come to light, especially in the recent years with low interest rates, is an opportunity to look at our, what is called the CalPERS side fund. I'm just going to give you a very brief overview of what that is. Essentially, back in 2003, CalPERS, in order to try to stabilize the volatility of the rates, took all the agency plans of 100 employees or less and merged them into a pool for actuarial purposes. So in San Bruno's case, the safety pool at that time and remains today to be less than 100 employees. So that safety, basically the safety plan was merged into a greater pool. When that occurred, what happened was that CalPERS determined that there was an unfunded liability at that point in time for the safety pool. And that what they agreed to was that the agencies, each agency would be responsible for paying that obligation over a term of 25 years. So right now, with the rates that we pay to CalPERS for the safety plan, right now it's about 36%. A percentage of that rate is actually to pay this, what is called the side fund. CalPERS uses a 7.75%. They recently changed their investment assumptions to a 7.5% rate of return. So what they're saying is that over a term of 20 years is how they look at it. They believe that they will achieve a 7.5% annual return on their investment. In turn, that's the rate that we pay on the liability. So it's sort of like having a mortgage or a loan that we pay a 7.5% interest rate over that 25-year period. What a pension obligation bond, the opportunity to issue a pension obligation bond is essentially to capitalize on the lower interest rates. So right now, in the range of 5% to 5.5%, essentially saving a 2%. So you can issue pension obligation bonds and pay off that side fund, that remaining side fund, and reduce your payment over the remaining course of 15 years that remain on those, on that side fund amortization. So that, in essence, is what a pension obligation bond is. And what it does is it will, at the point in time that those funds, the bonds are issued, and then they are provided to CalPERS, that debt is paid off at CalPERS and results in a reduction in our rates going forward. And therefore, the debt service on the pension obligation bonds is less than the amount that we would pay to CalPERS for that obligation. So I'm happy to answer any questions right now, if you have any, or we will be coming back, obviously. This is a complicated topic, and so we'll return with some greater discussion on it in the future.
Is there a question?
No.
Okay.
I just took a call back there, I'm sorry.
Okay. Again, this is a complicated area, and one of the things that needs to be done in order to get the ball rolling is a, an action by the city council to complete a review of the city's eligibility, I guess is the best way to say it, to issue debt. It's a pretty routine, non-binding action that we will ask you to consider as part of our presentation on this in a little bit more detail on June 26th. Moving on, we thought it might be useful to spend just a little bit more time on some of the supplemental proposals. I've distributed a sheet that consolidates all of the supplemental requests into one front and back sheet. And I wanted to highlight a couple of these items very quickly, just to make sure that the council is fully understanding what the topic areas addressed here are. I'm kind of going to, I'm going to move around the sheet a little bit. So I'm starting in the middle. I don't think that we clearly and completely addressed in the center section of the front of the page under community development. There are a couple of proposals here. One is fairly simple, and that is that with the loss of redevelopment, there were a number of three small contributions that the city has historically made to programs provided by others that serve homeless or other housing needs within our region. And this contribution has been paid to these organizations via redevelopment. So these were historically, and for a long period of time, have been contributions that the agencies have relied on. Our initial thought was that these might need to be completely eliminated, and so we did not put them into the budget as a, what I would call a base budget item that wouldn't necessarily attract your attention. We wanted to call them out because we felt it was important for the council to make a thoughtful decision about whether you wanted to continue those. We're recommending that you do, and given the dollar amount, feel that it is an expenditure that is both hugely desirable and affordable for the city at the given, at this time. You wouldn't create any obligation except for a year-for-year consideration, and obviously, if circumstances prevented it in future years, we could, we could potentially cut those off if we, as we have done with other outside funding to other agencies for their programs. Just above, and those three are the HIP Housing, Shelter Network, Homeless Center, and the North Peninsula Family Service, North Peninsula Neighborhood Services. In each, I misspoke. Rather than funding that through the general fund, our proposal, I'm sorry, is that that be funded by the below-market-rate housing fund. That's your in-lu fees that you've collected over the years from housing projects. I'm sorry that I misspoke about that. Again, you know that that's a, that's a limited pot of money. But again, we think that this is a fairly smallish amount that has a pretty significant benefit, and again, consider it on a year-for-year basis. Similarly, we have a restricted fund that we're, we've, a couple of restricted funds that we've been collecting in conjunction with building permits. Every building permit carries with it a surcharge that is a contribution to the document imaging fee and separately to a technology fee that are precisely identified for certain technology and document management initiatives that the city has undertaken and is continuing on an ongoing basis. We've made very good progress on document imaging and converted many years' worth of building plans and documents and are now wanting to finish that project by providing the additional funds that will allow us to continue and complete the, at least the historical accumulation of plans and make them easily and more readily searchable and accessible by residents and designers and other real estate professionals online. On the, moving to the back of this page, there is a, towards the bottom in what's called the technology fund, we are proposing, I did touch on this at the study session last week, a complete overhaul of our website, which we think is important for enhanced usability and attractiveness and just overall communication with residents. And obviously, we're seeing an increasing utilization of the website, particularly in the aftermath of the explosion and fire, where there's a larger-than-ever need to push out information to the community and to the public generally. This initiative would be funded by the revenues in the technology fee, as well as in the trust fund that is funding the Crestmore Recovery Activities, as a portion of that is really directly and deliberately intended to provide information related to those specific activities. I'll let the cable television staff touch on the marketing program here in their presentation tonight and jump back to two fairly comprehensive proposals for staff reorganization in order to meet some very specific needs within the organization. First, within the administrative departments, is a proposal to fund an assistant city manager position. I did touch on this last week when we met, but probably wasn't as clear as perhaps would be useful to the council and to the public. It is our intent to present you with a proposal that both this and the one in the community services department, I think, do need a little bit more work for final implementation. But our intent was to try and minimize cost, maximize flexibility within the organization, and meet an identified need. In this particular case, the assignment of a dedicated assistant city manager position. In this particular proposal, the reorganization includes reclassification of an addition, an existing director position in our organization, the human resources director, and backfilling that position at a lower level, which results in some cost savings. Combined with a proposal in the next line under community development to eliminate the general fund funding for the housing and redevelopment manager and to transfer that into the successor agency budget, which is a dedicated $250,000 allocation under the redevelopment dissolution program, that the net effect of that administrative reorganization is cost-neutral, or very close to cost-neutral. Moving down to the community services department, there are a couple of issues here that I think we may not have been absolutely clear with the city council about and that are really the impetus for the reorganization that's proposed. And I won't go through the, all of the details unless the council would like me to do that. First of all, anytime that there is a position, particularly a management position, becomes vacant in the city service, we do a, as thorough as we possibly can and thoughtful evaluation of whether reorganization might be possible in order to eliminate, downgrade, otherwise shift-around responsibilities in order to save cost. In this particular case, the circulation services manager position has been vacant now for a number of months, and the community services department has evaluated the viability of utilizing additional part-time hours in the library to cover a number of services, and in fact, has already, in large measure, reorganized the way it does business in the absence of that position, and has been doing so quite effectively. This reorganization saves the need to transfer funds out of the one-time resource of the state interlibrary loan and state library fund that the city has accumulated a small amount of money, but as we've drawn on that over the last couple of years, have been concerned of increasing risk of that fund being depleted prior to us having a real opportunity to deploy those, as I think was, has historically been the council's intent for facility-related improvements or replacement. Couple of issue areas in the community services department that really do need our attention, and that is the long-term stability and viability of the senior, of staff resources to the senior services program. I don't know if that, if we were entirely clear with council last week, that while we have been very fortunate and have continued the service of the senior services manager over the past year since her retirement as a contracted-back, part-time employee under the rules that are currently in place under PERS, our retirement system, those rules have changed. And persons who contract back after retirement are no longer eligible to work 960 hours per year, as has been the case in the past. They are only eligible to work 960 hours total. So there is a need to secure the operations and the management of the senior services program, and our reorganization is intended to address that issue, along with a continuing need by the department to better secure the operations of the front office up at the rec center. The city council may recall, a few years ago, and I'm sorry, I don't remember precisely what year it was, we cut the full-time staffing in the recreation center office from two administrative support personnel to one, and backfilled on an ongoing, continuous basis the support to the administrative operations in that front office with part-time hourly staff.
You said we cut, didn't somebody retire, therefore we didn't fill that position, and we eliminated that? Or?
Correct, we eliminated the position.
Okay.
That's what I meant by cutting it. Yeah, so it was, you're correct.
Thank you.
It followed a retirement. This proposal actually would restore a second position, a second full-time city position in the front office, and it does so via the complete reorganization that, as you see on the paper, ends up being a cost-neutral proposal. So at this point, as I said, I think that this is a plan that will work. I would suggest to you that I would like to spend some additional time internally to massage this a little bit, but this is, I wanted you to make, I wanted to make sure that you understood exactly what was proposed here, and could be satisfied that, at least in my opinion, we've done a terrific job of evaluating opportunities, meeting needs, and containing costs. So with that, I would either take questions on that or move on to our next topic.
I can forward questions.
Okay. We received a couple of, I'm not going to go through all of the questions that we think that we answered last week. If you don't feel that you got an answer to a question that you raised, please do let us know. There were a couple of questions that have come up subsequently, and I wanted to give you at least an oral answer. And as I said, we will include a complete transcript of the questions that we've understood that we've received and the answers for your meeting on June 26th. Two additional questions. One is, there is a pretty significant difference between the cost of facility maintenance and utilities compared, comparably between the police department, police station building, and the fire department for the two fire stations. I don't have the precise numbers in front of me, but the answer to that question is, the reason for that discrepancy is that where there is 24/7 operations in all of those facilities, obviously, the police department receives a pretty significant amount of janitorial services, and that is provided by the facilities division. In other words, we have, I believe we have one custodian assigned full-time to the police station, is that correct?
Almost.
Sure, Randy, oh, Randy is here. Okay, almost full-time. Just based on the workload at that facility. By contrast, I believe it's correct that there is no janitorial service provided by the facilities division to the fire stations. Fire personnel live in the station, they, they make, they take care of it. They clean it, they, they do what otherwise would be provided by our facilities staff for regular, day-to-day maintenance and cleaning services. In the, and again, I did not go back and completely verify the precise numbers, but in terms of utilities, it's my understanding that we budget the full cost of the utilities that the city pays. However, in the police station facility, we receive some of our operating costs back from BART, who is a roughly, I guess roughly half of the building is, or some significant part of it, is, is BART operations and is not actually utilized. The building was built in order that it could serve both of the departments. We own it, and we sublease to the BART police department. So it's my understanding that at least a portion of our utility costs are covered by BART, so.
Do you know what portion that is?
I don't.
25%, correctly, I believe.
Is that accurate for the amount of space that they occupy?
I would say it is pretty, pretty close. Is that, is it, I mean, that's, that was how it was based.
Does our cleaning facility maintenance personnel clean that portion as well?
I don't know the answer to that.
No. Only the city person.
No, okay.
Thank you.
That would have been my guess, but they don't.
Utility cost is actually four times higher for police than it is for fire.
Yeah, we can investigate that a little bit further. I don't know the answer off top, except for the, except for the fact that some of that is paid by BART. We can get you the actual numbers.
Right, I mean, if BART's paying some of it, then it's even a bigger discrepancy.
The full cost is budgeted.
Full cost is budgeted, so we get some of it back.
We get some of it back.
Twenty-five percent of that or twenty-five percent of the utilities you believe we will receive back from BART out of that number?
Twenty-five percent of the budgeted number is what we anticipate, I mean, we build based on actuals, but it's twenty-five percent of what the budget is.
Okay.
Does that answer the question? Yes. Unless there was, I think the one, one thing that we may not have answered in public, if I remember correctly, is that the successor agency budget shows a total cost of $324,000 and only $250,000 in anticipated revenue through tax increment, again, based on the formulas for, under the law, based on dissolution of redevelopment. The difference between those numbers is included in the general fund budget, it's not, it's, it's a cost that has already been captured in the budget and would represent a cost for things like our ongoing use of of legal services associated with successor agency or and/or city activities related to the dissolution of redevelopment. The law requires us to prepare a successor agency budget to present that to the Oversight Board for their review and approval, and irrespective of what amount of costs we might be able to demonstrate, it is, we, we know that we will receive $250,000 and, you know, it's probably a good idea to demonstrate our costs in that budget at what we actually think they are, even though we don't anticipate that that will be compelling either to the to the Oversight Board or to the state in terms of how much money we should actually receive back. We expect the $250,000. And however, it was pointed out that we could do a better job of of showing that in the budget so that it's clear that that's not just a mismatch between revenues and expenditure, that's actually factored into the overall budget. With that, unless there are immediate questions, we'd move on to the Public Services Department, including the enterprises, and then we'll, we'll, we'll come back with a few additional items at the end.
Honorable Mayor, Council members, good evening. I have here with me all of the service managers and the acting city engineer to help me with any answer that you might have, and certainly I will need their help. Public Services Department is responsible for overall management of street water, sewer, storm systems. In addition to the management of those systems, also is responsible for delivering the capital improvement program for the whole city and managing our central, our fleet. Our budget for next year is, in essence, a no-change budget versus this year. There are two changes in our budget. One is, as a result of the loss of RDA funding, will be more limited matching fund for ongoing projects such as the medium project or transit corridor project, those type of project which historically was meshed with RDA money, but the Finance Director later on will have a little bit more discussion on the subject. And also, another change in our budget is a reduction of .5 management position for the central, central garage. Our focus for, I will just highlight a few focus area for the whole department for next year. Certainly, one of the most important one will be to fill the three very critical open position, existing three open position in the department right now. Those three positions are the two deputies, one for the city engineer position and also the other deputy position for for operation and maintenance, and the management analyst position. Another main focus will be improving the overall efficiency in maintenance and operation. What that really will looks like specifically for sewer will mean implementation of the CD and CDO implementation plan. For the water division, what that really will looks like, even if took us a long, longer time than any of us would have wanted to to implement the CMMS program in the sewer. Sewer, right now, is able to utilize the CMMS program in a very effective manner, using for pre-planning and pre-programming activities for maintenance activities and basically based on a pre-scheduled sequence of maintenance activity, they are, they are producing work orders and they are able to increase their day-by-day activity. Is our intent this year, next year, to de, to develop and then to implement a implementation plan of CMMS also in the water division. The next efficiency improvement what our department will focus on will be in central garage. How I mentioned before, was proposed a reduction of .5 FT for the garage, for the garage manager position. This last year, the department looking for opportunities for managing this vacancy and assessing many alternatives, including, including partnership with other cities like Millbrae and South City. Neither of those alternative were feasible and from managerial and financial reason. During this process also was concluded that it's possible for us to reduce the FT number in the garage if, in the same time, process improvements will be implemented. And it's our intent for next year to implement process improvement and also to assess and possibly reduce our fleet, decreasing and minimizing the maintenance cost overall for the city. Another main, another focus for the department will be to further improve our accuracy of the information on our system. And specifically here, I will highlight, the focus will be on our stormwater system. Right now, the information system is accurate at 50% level for our storm system, and it's our intent to improve that percentage by the end of next year to 75% and at the end of next year. Another focus area for us will be to ongoingly refine the development and the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, delivery process to meet your need, your objectives, delivering those project on time and on budget. And of course, will be an ongoing focus on of our department coordinating with all of the departments, the reconstruction of the Crestmore infrastructure project. Those, those are the main highlights what I wanted to mention, and I will stand for any question and any other financial highlights, team will follow my presentation.
Well, are we supposed to ask you about any of the departments? Are all of the departments or?
I am assuming yes.
Okay, because I asked.
Go ahead.
Okay. I asked you this before, but I'd like you to state it for the public. On page four, 179, we talk, you talk about the streetlights and improvements. I know years ago, we started talking about replacing the existing street lights themselves, the poles, and then also improving the streetlights themselves as well. So you have this part, you initiated a pilot program, and now you're going to go on with it. So what's happening with all that?
During the budget last year, the Council expressed your desire for the department to focus on replacing our lighting system with LED. And right now, you say very well-defined CIP project, which you will have more detailed presentation on, is in the next two months. The department is ready to present you with a clear plan, with a first step of implementation of a pilot project to choose which technology you want to support, and then a step-by-step process, how that can take place based on your decision.
Okay, so we'll hear more about the details.
Correct.
Okay, and then.
I know you said it'll be coming sometime, do you know when that, when that might be or?
Two months.
With the capital.
In two months, I said two months is, I think, all of the, all of the information is in place and will depend how I will be able to work out the time with the city manager. When the city manager will feel comfortable that all of the informations are in place for that discussion and presentation.
We will be, if, if, if this is captured in the CIP, the CIP will, will be bringing that to you within the next 30 days. I think the director is suggesting that we probably want to spend some focused time with you about this particular topic because it was something that was of strong interest to the City Council. So depending on how you want to handle that as, as, as a component of the CIP discussion or separately, certainly within the next 60 days, we will be able to be back to you with that.
So come on.
Yeah. Okay. On page 538, we're doing a illegal dumping hotline. It's set for goals and objectives to reduce trash load through enhancement of wet water street, wet, wet weather, street sweeping, ha, say that twice fast, monthly cleaning and all that stuff. And then it says, you're having a new illegal dumping hotline. Is that?
Yes.
That's great, if we are, how?
But I, I will, I will follow up with a little bit more details.
Oh, okay. The other, so we are going to have one?
Yes.
Okay.
But I don't have all of the details, I will follow up with the.
Oh, okay. And then I had, hold on. Oh, and I'm sorry, I forgot where it is. I think it's under, I forgot what it's under, but with the garbage, we had, we talk about.
To include a goal for the organics?
Yes.
That's the issue that you raised before. Yes, and was your request if is possible for us to include in our but program or say goal to have some education and outreach on the organic program. And yes, it is possible, will be included in our, if the city manager will support, certainly will be included in our next year budget.
Did you, did you guys catch that? One of the goals I'd like us to add is education about organics and what in the future we're going to have to do it. I mean, eventually, we're going to have to do it, so I'd like us to start doing some pre-education about it to the public. So I was hoping we could add it to one of the goals for, I guess, is it under solid waste?
Yes, it should be under solid waste, yes.
Okay, but it wasn't in here, so I wanted to.
Yes.
Oh, there it is, 195. So I wanted to add that. Also, on page five, 235 and 236, we have the National Pollution and Elimination System, and we have new regulations, right? Didn't we just get recertified and there's a whole bunch of new regulations?
Correct.
Is that?
Right now, the city meets all of the new requirement.
Oh, great.
You say very aggressive reporting requirement on ongoing basis for new development and also maintenance and operational activities. Based on the proposed budget, the city meets all of the new requirements.
Okay, it's fabulous. I didn't see anything under the stormwater about keeping track of the dredging or lack thereof of the channel on, that's on airport land. I don't know if you've noticed it, but if you looked, if you're on San Budo Avenue and you look to the north, the channel is heavily silted up, there's actual plants, just like little islands, and there's plants growing on it. The ducks love it, but we've had low rainfall this last year, so it hasn't impacted us, but I'm worried that in the future it will. I know we have to wait for fishing game and fish and wildlife permits, but I don't know where we are with that, so could we have an update sometime soon?
Certainly, that would be under the responsibility of the flood district, Sematol County flood district, but in coordination with us, I will make sure that we'll be on update on that issue.
Okay, great.
The department will contact them and will discuss this issue and provide an update what is their scheduled activity for the flood channel.
Okay, do we ever send anyone out there just to look at, so we have our own assessment of what's going on?
You say pretty sustained and ongoing collaboration between my department and the flood district, mainly going to those two pump station and making sure that those pump station are really functional all the time. But I will make sure that you will have an update on the longer plan on the flood channel itself, what kind of maintenance activity the flood district is planning.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's.
I just have a general question, and then I'll forward, so we'll bore everybody, every line item. I knew you'd appreciate that tonight.
Ask what you have to ask.
Yeah, how, when you're reviewing it, how is it determined? So we have an item, we have a line item, and it's exactly the same as it is last year as it is to this year, the verbiage, description, and the dollar amount. What method do you use to go back to assess what is needed or not needed, whether it needs to be raised or lowered, or whether it remains the same as the description?
Based on the experience of last year and foreseeing what is coming up and knowing what is the focus will be for the next year and if the next year need is expected to be. what is the focus will be for the next year and if the next year need is expected to be met by the same dollar amount.
Okay, thank you.
Let me add to that, because that's the, that's the first level. Departments prepare initial budgets based on their best understanding of what, as the director said, what the, what the work program will require and what the prior year experience is. The finance department, in coordination with my office and often myself and the finance director personally, are review the expenditures in, in direct relationship to the expected actual expenditures. In other words, if there's a history of the funds not being needed, they're questioned, they're often deleted, and there is at, at least a discussion with the department to make sure that the budget management staff is understanding why that expenditure is necessary if, if it's either new or unused in the, in the prior year. Similarly, there's a, a, a pretty thorough assessment via the finance department analysts of, and the director herself of both the, the areas where a change either up or down is experienced in a line item. The departments are required to, at the front end, required to submit a, an explanation of, of why there's a change proposed. And, and then that's reviewed and analyzed and, and sometimes what the departments have requested is, is, is not approved. So that, I, I hope captures the intent of your question because we've told you that there is an active evaluation of all expenditures. Departments are expected in the front end to minimize their, their proposed budgets. And there's a, then an additional layer of oversight and review that sometimes if we have time includes first the finance department and then me or me and the finance department in, in coordination with each other. It is true that when we're, when we're working towards a hold-the-line budget, we will often start with base level, this is what it took us to operate last year. Can we cut it or where do we have to reorganize in order to keep it as tight as possible? So where you see expenditures being precisely defined in the same way, I would say at least for the most part, they have been evaluated and determined to be both necessary and accurate.
One other check and balance is in our department that in addition to the line item budget, the department is developing a, a program level budget. Last year and the year before, you had a copy or so of that program-based budget. And that's another level of assessment that if any program change would be necessary for the next year, then would result on certain changes in the line item budget.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna move into some numbers. So before we get into the numbers, one other item on this slide that I would like to just point out is Measure M is a ten-dollar voter-approved VLF. Back in two thousand, November two thousand and ten, voters approved a ten-dollar VLF that can be used to fund street maintenance efforts as well as street sweeping and some activities related to maintaining the stormwater system. So this is a new fee that we are just now starting to receive, and we are in the process of developing a work program for this fee. So I call this out because this is not incorporated into, at this point in time, is not incorporated into the budget that you have before you because we are still in the process of determining where the need lies, and this is about a two hundred, estimated to be about two hundred thousand dollars a year. And as I said, can be used for street, street activities or stormwater activities. So that's something that we are working on and we'll come back and provide further information on once we've determined a proposed work program for those funds. So I'm just gonna touch you very quickly on the revenue sources, the revenues for the various public services operations. This first slide touches on street sources of streets funding. As you can see, there's a variety of funding sources, the general fund at the current year, two thousand and twelve, thirteen level of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Just a very brief history of the general fund contribution to streets. A couple, a few years ago, the city used to historically receive what was called traffic congestion relief proposition forty-two funds. Those funds required, in order to be eligible to receive those funds, the city had to maintain, had to maintain a general fund contribution to streets operations, something that's called the maintenance of effort. That dollar amount was four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. So historically, the general fund contribution to streets has been four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Couple of years ago, the state did some swap around funds as they like to do. Essentially, POP forty-two funds were eliminated at that point in time and were backfilled with increased gas tax funds. So when that occurred, when that swap occurred, even though net, we're still receiving essentially the same amount of money from the state, that maintenance of effort requirement did go away because we no longer have the POP forty-two funds. However, in an interest of maintaining the streets operating budget at the current level, we've maintained that contribution close to what that MOE effort, general fund contribution has historically been. So that's the number you see before you. The gas tax, overall, we see, received just under one point two million dollars of gas tax funds. In addition, we receive Measure A, it's a sales tax that we receive for streets funding, street improvements, as well as some reimbursements related to maintenance of right-ofways and the caltrans right-ofways and some sea cake fees. So overall, that brings total revenue for streets activities to about two point three million. We utilize of that one point two million for the operations and that leaves a residual of just about one point one million to be used for capital purposes. On the enterprise revenues, I just wanted to quickly walk through, present you the budget numbers for the current year, what the estimated actuals are anticipated to be, as well as the proposed budget for twelve thirteen. So the, just to start with the twelve thirteen proposed budget figures for water and wastewater, those figures are a product of the rate analysis that was completed in the late winter, early spring. So those numbers do anticipate a rate increase. However, just in looking back at the budget and the estimated actuals, what you'll see is that for the current year, we are actually seeing, we're anticipating to come in over budget on water revenues. And the reason for that is essentially we had a very dry winter and what we saw was a significant jump in consumption during the winter months over what we had previously seen, so therefore, we are seeing some increase in the revenues. So we'll continue to monitor that and report back to you as we, obviously, we need to meet that revenue requirement, and so we'll keep an eye on that consumption and how that's driving the rates or the revenues. On the, similar situation on the wastewater side, however, the, just a reminder that the wastewater revenues are sort of a fixed fee through the, throughout the year for the residential customers. So the estimated actual for the current year is actually anticipated to be slightly below the budget because the preceding, the previous fiscal year was actually, we had reduced water consumption, so therefore sewer calculations, sewer revenues ended up being slightly less this year than what was budgeted. And then on the stormwater, the, those fees are collected, it's a fixed fee that's been on the property tax roll for many years, it's a consistent dollar amount that we receive, and the one small change decrease that you are seeing in the stormwater revenue side is.
The, the VLF funds, so we're proposing allocating all of that VLF funds to storm water?
No, we're, I mean, we're in the process of evaluating what the best use of those funds. What I was highlighting here is the, the current, there was currently a four-dollar VLF in place that required, it was a fifty-fifty split between streets and stormwater, it was a required split. The new VLF doesn't have that same requirement in place, we can determine how to, where to put those funds. So the reduction in the stormwater is a result of that sunset of that four-dollar VLF.
Since you mentioned that, though, I would just say that one of the things that the city continues to be plagued with a little bit, and I, I think Councilmember O'Connell touched on this maybe inadvertently in, in her comments about concerns about the potential for flooding and maintenance of the flood channel and that type of thing, even though that is a jurisdictional responsibility of the flood control district, there are numbers of issues that the city has historically not been funded adequately through the stormwater fee that we collect on, I believe it's collected on the property tax, that is, that flows to the city itself. It actually turns out to be a very small number, and then we're able to get a little bit more from that fifty-fifty split of the, of the local San Mateo County VLF surcharge. And now we have this new additional two hundred thousand dollars that can be used for a couple of different purposes, but I would say that stormwater is an area that, given that it's been historically underfunded, is a, is a, is a topic that I think the council probably needs to take up in, in a, in a more thorough and thoughtful manner when we're able to come back to you with some ideas about that.
So that will move on to cable television?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, I'll be presenting the highlights for the cable television and local origination budgets. As you know, the cable operation is currently comprised of twenty positions, all of them filled, with the exception of the director. Al Johnson, our system engineer, is here, and I are currently sharing that role. Let me outline some highlights from this past fiscal year. The cable department extended the fiber and coax plant to include Pacific Vista's, Cedar Mills, the golf center, and Skyline College recently in order to serve those customers. What I mean about extending the fiber and coax plant is we added wires and equipment to, to, to reach those facilities. I don't wanna be too technical, so. Improvements were made to the internet service by way of a caching system, which you approved earlier this year. And the caching system was proposed to divert twenty-five percent of the traffic that we send down, down the pipes, and it did, it did so, in fact, a little bit better than twenty-five percent of that traffic. Combined with a reconfiguration of our network, we were able to achieve the faster downloads and eliminate saturation issues that we were experiencing in some areas. Most of the power supplies in the field have been replaced or upgraded this past year for more reliable performance. This helps avoid outages, and they're also battery-backed up, so we replace batteries as needed as well for that same reason. On the marketing side, two hundred and ninety-one new video subscriptions were added using the fixed pricing campaign, approved by council last year. In addition, one hundred and fifty-one internet subscriptions were added with current video customers, taking advantage of the internet service offer that we sent to those folks. The success of these promotional campaigns is one of the reasons that staff has seen a slowdown in losses as subscribers come back to us from our competitors. It's a trend that we're seeing, and I'll explain a little bit more of that later. As part of the sales effort, staff also had booths at the flea market, farmer's market. We sent letter out to businesses in the Bay Hill Business Park area, advertising our commercial services, and we conducted the four fixed pricing campaigns to non-subscribers. And those pricing campaigns that we, we conducted were aggressive in the, in the fact that we sent out multiple pieces during each one of those campaigns to non-subscribers to, as, as the mayor told us to, to really hit them hard with that, so that's what we did. Staff completed five retransmission agreements with five broadcast stations. Those are the agreements that we have to enter into to carry some broadcast stations that elect to have must-carry on our system. Three of those were major networks, and we'll have one this year as well. Staff recently renegotiated the digital telephone service, amending that contract and achieving a twenty percent discount while maintaining all the services and features, including the twenty free international countries. Staff has also renegotiated the twenty-four-seven after-hour support service agreement with enhanced services to be delivered at no additional cost. The department has seen a slowdown in basic TV subscriber losses at about half the losses of last year. At the same time, there has been an uptick in HD DVR box deployments, internet service subscriptions, phone service, and premium services, which is surprising because of Netflix. We are seeing folks coming back to Showtime and HBO mainly because of their programming. Staff continues to pursue the business sector and has added clients such as Stella and Dot, Provident Funding, Adidas, and Skyline College. This coming fiscal year, our continuing goal is to grow our subscriber basis for all services using direct sales mailers to both residential and business non-subscribers, and continue with the retention campaign via video advertising on cable TV. You may have seen some of those ads talking about the grass is greener on the other side and what to expect if you go, and we have a series of three or four of those that we're, we've been running as well and will continue to run. We're also recommending, as the city manager touched on, a sales effort with a dedicated, our proposal is a dedicated salesperson to target managers of apartment complexes and to market to commercial services to the business community. This is not a door-to-door sales campaign that we experienced before, we know the apprehension we have with that type of campaign, and, and we agree. And so this would be more of a, a person that would work with different departments in the city, you know, planning, water, utilities, those types of things, and reach out to the community in, in the form of the managers at complexes, and make sure that we're targeting those folks that are moving out and moving in and getting them, getting them first, and develop those relations, relationships with those folks, as well as someone that can go to the businesses in the Bay Hill area and sell some of our high-end internet services. And so that's, we'll come to you with that later on at some point, but that, that's something that we're looking for. We are also proposing to offer over-the-top services. Okay, what's over-the-top services? There are providers such as HBO, NBC, and even Turner are offering services where you can watch a video on a mobile device, like an iPad or an iPhone. And we are working with our billing company to offer those services as well as these providers. Staff is evaluating and researching the deployment of fiber to the home technology and preparing to upgrade the cable plant to offer more channels, faster internet speeds, much better reliability of service, all with higher quality video. And that's just an exploration stage at the moment. Staff is exploring security alarm services for residents and businesses via the cable system. And these improvements are all being considered with the same objective, to offer state-of-the-art services, excellent customer service, at a competitive price. The proposed operating budget before you tonight projects revenues to be just over ten million dollars. As you're aware, revenues are derived from monthly service fees charged to residential and business customers. We get some advertising commissions and various one-time fees. Our expenditures are projected to be nine point five million, comprised of programming and personnel costs totaling just over five point nine million, representing about sixty percent of our expenditures, interdepartmental allocations, franchise fees, equity earnings transfer to the general fund, about one point six million or eighteen percent of expenditures, and then the internet service fees and other operating expenses make up the balance. The local origination department budget is funded by the city council-approved rate allocation of a dollar ninety per subscriber per month, or twenty-two eighty a year. That revenue covers operating and personnel costs to provide coverage of city council meetings and other meetings, city meetings, school board meetings. We offer an internship program, videotape local events. Staff also produces public service announcements, such as the fireworks video you've seen, commercial, cable TV promotions promoting our services. Currently, we're doing two additional monthly programs and maintaining the channel and messaging system. That concludes my presentation. Al Johnson and I are here to answer questions along with Kim and the city manager.
Oh, no, I don't have a question. I was impressed with how many new businesses you have, what, forty? Sixty-six to one hundred and seven or something?
Yes, we're, we're over a hundred now.
Good job.
Most of those are on our D-three service, which is a DOCSIS three service, which is a faster internet speed than the normal speed that we, we would sell to residents. I know, I'm sorry, Connie. I'm trying to not be so technical. But anyway, so that faster internet service is, is more appropriate for businesses than, than the residential. But there are some businesses that use the residential service as well.
Just had a question more directed at the city manager. Was there a report or analysis that was being done in regards to the cable department? And if my memory is correct, was that something that we were going to have? And if my memory is correct, was that something that we were going to have or review a few months ago? Or is there any update or status on that?
At the time of the directors leaving the city approximately six months ago, we undertook, we kept a position vacant in order that we could take the time to do a more thoughtful analysis of the operations of the department and asked for a review of, with an industry expert, a review of the operating strategy of the department with the intent to provide some information and recommendations to the City Council. We've worked with the cable subcommittee and reviewed the preliminary report and have some additional direction from them, and will be proceeding to bring this entire thing back to the City Council within the near future, I would say. Unfortunately, that work effort has been a little bit delayed. Staff has been delayed. My office has been delayed in getting it done through the analysis by the subcommittee. But the answer is yes. In fact, the report was prepared in draft form, and we will be bringing it to the full City Council as soon as we've had an opportunity to complete our review of it.
Did any of the initial findings that you've seen or had the draft of have any bearing on the budget in itself? Because it just seems one would complement the other.
Yes.
As far as direction, that's why, as you said, the director's position was being held to make a full assessment and analysis.
Right.
So I don't know how long we've had that or how one might tie into the other.
The primary recommendation out of the report, there are two primary, one primary finding and one primary recommendation. And the primary finding is that the cable enterprise is pursuing a strategy that is viable and that is consistent with the industry standard. There is still a, it is still a small company fishing, if you will, in a relatively small market pool, given that our service territory is confined by the jurisdictional limits of the city of San Bruno. And recognizing that, there is a recommendation in the report for a more focused and strategic effort around marketing. The report recommends consideration of a full-time marketing position in lieu of a director. That is, we've kind of walked down the middle of that recommendation by continuing to defer the appointment of a full-time director position in order that we can deploy a marketing program, as is indicated, and actually the director, the acting director did not. If we go back to the supplemental proposals, there is a deployment of $70,000, which would be essentially salary savings for an additional period of time where the director position is not filled. So at this point, the answer is yes. The long answer and the short answer are yes, that the results and information recommendation from that report have been to the best of our ability at this point, included within the budget proposals.
Is that what the $70,000 was, is a off-spin of the draft report as far as the marketing aspect?
The $70,000 supplemental proposal is to use salary savings from continued vacancy of the director position for a marketing program. I think my answer is yes to what you just said.
We have, oh, no, I was just saying, great.
We have a few, she'll have questions for Mr. Frapp.
Anything I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve. We have one more, hopefully very short review that I'd like, oh, you want to go? Can you make it quick?
I'm going to talk numbers again just for a minute here, but just a overview of the cable television fund. Just to recap some more to what was presented with the other enterprises, looking at revenue history. Couple things I'd like to point out on the revenues. One, there is a misstatement in the budget narrative that I'll call to your attention on page 338. It states that the revenues, the 1213 proposed revenue budget includes a 5 percent rate increase, which in fact is not the case. We have purposely held the revenues based on what we estimate them to be based on current rates with the thought of evaluating that rate structure in the coming months. One of the timing of the rates, one item that's come to my attention recently, is that our rates have been historically adopted with the start of the fiscal year. Some of the competitors changed their rates in the early fall, October, and so one thought is maybe it makes sense for us to start looking at evaluating our rate structure in conjunction with, when some of the competitors are also looking at their rates. So that is something that we'll continue to work on in the coming months. The other item I just want to point out, I think we've had, it's a very conservative revenue budget for cable proposed for the upcoming year. It's probably one of the most conservative that we've had, and as you can see, it's really essentially pulled the line from what our estimated actual are predicted to be for this year. On the expenditure side, some reduction as a result of one debt service payment that was a five-year lease purchase agreement for the digital set-top boxes five years ago. The current fiscal year was the final year of that payment, so our expenditures will be reduced next year by that dollar amount. The only other thing to bring to your attention, we have an operating, we're projecting an operating surplus in cable next year of just over $565,000. That is before taking into account the cable or the capital improvement program. And just historically, our capital improvement program has been, since there have been significant investments needed necessary in order to maintain competitiveness. And going forward, another item to be evaluated is sort of what the need is, ongoing need is to reserve for capital investment in the cable fund. On that note, the, as Steve mentioned, there are pass-through fees, a franchise fee, as well as equity earnings transfers to the general fund that come out of the cable operating budget of just over $1.5 million. Essentially, that $500,000 surplus is after taking away that $1.5 million that's transferred to the general fund. And another item to evaluate in coming months is whether it makes sense to continue to transfer that amount at that level, or whether there's maybe some thought of potentially reducing that amount and allowing some of those funds to stay within the cable fund. So just a few items to bring to your attention and to consider as we move forward on this.
This is the last topic that we have tonight, and we'll move through this relatively quickly and then ask for any additional questions or comments.
One question before we move on on Kim's last statement. So the current general fund budget already accounts for that transfer of those funds. So if we did make an adjustment, then that would be a reduction in the...
Correct. So very quickly, moving through the equipment purchase requests. The first slide is a summary of the vehicle requests. We have a total of seven vehicles being requested in the police department, three of those being marked black and white, three black and whites. Policy has been, practice has been to fund those in the general fund operating budget due to the fact that they are continuously purchased on an annual basis, so the funding source for those is the general fund. The other four vehicles are items that have been reserved for in the equipment reserve. All of them are, have basically passed their useful life. And just the dollar amounts, I'd like to mention that the purchase amounts may seem low. Department practice has been to actually purchase these vehicles, some of these unmarked vehicles from Run-A-Car. They're basically previously Run-A-Car, and we've experienced significant savings in this practice. So some of those dollar amounts may seem low for purchase of a new car. These are actually cars that have been used previously that have low mileage and have proven to have a pretty lengthy useful life. On the fire vehicle, there's an $80,000 request for a human vehicle, and that is also an item funded in the equipment reserve. And finally, on wastewater, there's a request for a sewer lateral service truck in amount of $65,000 from the wastewater fund. So that's, any questions? I'll move on to the second half of the equipment purchase.
Can we get a description of what that lateral truck does?
Can we do that now?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The sewer lateral service truck is a truck that we needed and didn't have before. We actually acquired it. I'm sorry?
You just...
I don't know if you can hear me. I don't want to pull up the microphone. We needed to do service for the laterals that we have jurisdictional responsibility for, the lower laterals that I've stated before. And the existing truck is in very, very bad shape, and so it's also not tooled for, or the service body on the truck is not what we need it to be to house the camera equipment and some of the other machinery that we use to respond to a problem in a service lateral where we remove roots or clear blockage, or we introduce chemical foam to kill the roots. So the truck is in very bad condition. High mileage has passed its useful life, and it's, all of the equipment that we needed to put onto it is actually pushing it to its limit. So that's why we're asking for this truck.
So is the request for the truck and replacement equipment, or are we repurposing existing equipment on a new truck?
No, it's just for the truck and the service body. The equipment that we have now will just be transferred over to the new truck.
Okay.
It's not some of the tools that we need wrapped up into that price.
Okay, thank you.
And Kim, when these come forward again, they'll have the background information that we usually see with, where it gets more detailed, other than like what we're used to seeing, is that fair?
Any expenditure over $25,000 comes to you, and so it will come to you in the manner that you're used to seeing it now. I think what we will do is probably wrap all of these, I see one, I see these used vehicles in the police department for the unmarked are technically each of them under $25,000, but you will see those as well.
It's not a useful lateral truck somewhere.
Yeah. Hertz.
The answer is yes. You'll see them with the information that you typically see.
And one last question. Is there a set policy or guideline that would determine whether these vehicles are going to be general fund or funded from the equipment reserve? What determines that?
So all vehicles, with the exception of the black and whites, are reserve-funded in the equipment reserve, and the other exception being the equipment reserves for the general fund operations, and then each of the enterprise have separate reserves, obviously directly from that enterprise. But the black and whites are the only vehicles that have historically been purchased out of the operating budget.
And that's because they have a regular replacement cycle?
Correct.
Well, they're replaced so frequently, they, and there is, we historically have replaced either two or three per year, so that we're sort of constantly cycling them around, and that's the, there's generally a longer useful life and retention history that goes into those items that are reserved.
Okay, and so these unmarked vehicles have a longer life and then fall to a different category?
The unmarked vehicles are not direct emergency, first emergency responder vehicles. They, and they are more sort of like the cars that are operated for other non-safety folks, and so the answer is yes, they don't have that same experience.
Okay, thank you.
And so moving on to the equipment portion of those requests, the police department, there is a request for the replacement of three laptop computers, three out of the 19 in the department. There is a request for replacement of radio equipment, two-way radio system. These are both items that are reserve-funded in the equipment reserve. And finally, the replacement of firearms, and the intent is to replace 53 of them in the upcoming fiscal year. Those are partially funded in the equipment reserve with the requests, remaining requests for funds to come from the police asset forfeiture fund. In the recreation department and the library, community services, there's a request for replacement of some equipment, a boiler that has, it's basically original to the building, and there's been a buildup of sediment in that, and it's becoming a safety concern, so there's a request to replace that boiler. Similarly, in the library, a compressor, similar issues leaking inside, requires frequent maintenance, and a generator that the department is having trouble finding parts. It's so old, replacement parts and air filters. So these are all viewed to be critical replacements. One item of note is that these are, all three of these items are not items that have been historically reserved for in the equipment reserve. So this proposal requests the funds to come from the one-time revenue fund, given that there is no funding source right now in the equipment reserve. And this is one of the items that obviously we'll be looking at as we undertake a review of the equipment reserve policy in the coming months.
Kim, is there any anticipated savings in updating something like the boiler, where something newer, more efficient might actually lower operating costs over time?
That's a great question that we can look into further. It may, in terms of utility cost, to operate, the water cost would not be, would not change either way. In terms of the efficiency of heating system, that might save a little bit on the utilities.
I figure a boiler that size probably consumes quite a bit of, some sort of resource, gas.
It does, and when it leaks, it is leaking hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of gallons out into the parking lot at a time, and the energy to heat, that amount of water is significant. So I've not specifically asked a question about the utility savings, but there probably is some, I do not know the extent of that.
Thank you.
No, that concludes our presentation. We're interested and available for any questions the City Council has now or, now on the material that we presented tonight, or anything in the budget, or anything that we presented at the previous meeting. Again, we will do our best to compile, transcribe, and respond in writing as well as orally as we've done to any and all questions that we receive. And we'll be back to you on the 26th unless you have additional discussion you'd like to have tonight.
Does it look like this meeting will adjourn to September? No, not to September. I'm trying to get to...
We try.
...the 26th of the senior session.